Hello?
Hello?
I can't see anything. I think you have to add me as a panelist still.
There you are. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hold a special regular meeting of council to order at seven oh one P M on July twenty third, two thousand twenty five. We're going to go into bylaws. Two point one is the second reading of bylaw two zero five zero two zero two five, levying by law for this position. Resolution two zero two five one one four moved by Council Valentino, second by Council MacIver. Be resolved that by law two zero five zero dash two zero two five being the levy by law of the city of Thompson for the year twenty twenty five be given second reading. Administration? No comments? Council Valentino is the mover?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smoak. I do have some comments tonight as I wasn't able to attend in person last night. So I just wanted to say that to the public that we appreciate that. We understand that we are a little bit delayed in doing this and we certainly thank them for the patience in this year's budget. And it was good with this council that when we worked through this and I mean, we had the financial plan document and we went through it and we were all in agreement. And I think it it shows a lot that our operating was a balanced budget. And I think by showing that the seriousness that this council has towards public safety by having a two percent of public safety reserve funded shows that we understand that it's a top priority in this city. We walk through the same Walmart parking lot like everybody else. And we talk about public safety and I think we've learned a real valuable lesson in the last couple of months that it just doesn't mean downtown. It means fire safety and means protecting our community in all aspects of public safety. So when we talk about funding the public safety reserve, that those dollars in the reserve will be for all aspects. And I think that this budget shows that our C S O program, we are increasing the amount of times and hours that they're going to work, which should help. We should be able to see a presence. And that's what we need and people need. We need more presence on our streets, whether it's R C and P or the C S Os. And I think that the partnership we have now with the province to help fund the C S U program is also valuable that we talked about that and we received that in the provincial budget this year. And I think that by funding the public safety reserve, it gives us an opportunity to be able to be at the table to leverage dollars for whatever that may be. If it means for fire suppression units or or fire suppression stuff, or if it means for safety as in downtown safety or programs, it gives us more of a leverage opportunity for the other levels of government to come to the table with us. So I I think that us addressing public safety is kudos to us as a council when we have good discussions about it. I also want to talk a little bit in this budget that the CFO talked about is our debt ratio and how in twenty twenty eight we will potentially have no debt as a city. That's completely unheard of this day and age. There are a lot of municipalities that actually when interest rates were so low, they used all of their debt that they could. They borrowed all the money they could because rates were low. So we are in a unique position moving forward. And when we see that we have funded that asset management position in this budget, that will give the ability for that position. But for the councils of the day to have to borrow money or have the ability to borrow money to protect our assets. Because when we sit at this table year by year by budget, it's not a year to year budget. You have to do your due diligence and look that you're planning for the future of this city. So by having our debt reduced and having that as an opportunity for the future for our asset management is huge. And I think that puts us in a very great position financially. And I think that's another good thing. Because the negativity yesterday I felt was very, very not fair because this is a very good budget. There's very good things. We put resources into many more positions. Our executive team is tired. They put in way too much hours. So we've been able to provide them some resources to increase staff positions. And I think that that's valuable for the public to know because we want the services that the public needs and we haven't been able to deliver them because we've been short-staffed. So I think we've identified that by doing it. And I and last but not least, I I know there was comments about economic development and it was so, I don't know if it was unfortunate or fortunate that we had the the meeting afterwards. And I think that was a good opportunity for the public to see that we had two huge economic development plans and potential businesses that we did land sale deals with, which is really exciting. And there has been some of that coming forward and there's more to come. So we are looking at that. We are working on that. And and my last final comments is we can't compare apples to apples when we talk about the city of Thompson's mill rate and our taxes. That's not how it works, especially when you look outside of other provinces. Each province has their own tax strategy and how they are funded. Saskatchewan has the rebate some of the P S D municipalities. Alberta has a completely different provincial tax structure. So you have to, you can't compare apples to apples, but I can tell you that the city of Thompson and where we sit on taxes and mill rates, we are not at the high end in this province of Manitoba. I know in the past we've had that as a presentation item and I'm sure we can get that details if any members of the public would like. But I think that we are very adequate in how we do this. And this budget, I think, is very, very good. And I certainly appreciated that we had come to a consensus and that we did review all these numbers and that we got to where we were, especially when we are in a crisis situation and our executive team is working day and night. As we see our C A O had to step out now for another fire meeting. So I appreciate the work of the finance department, of the executive team, and I appreciate the work that we did as a council and the good conversation we had. I thought it was good. And I just kind of want to flip this to a positive coming off of last night that I'm in support of this and I look forward to making a commitment that we start the twenty twenty six budget in the fall because I think we owe that to our residents and we owe it to us and to our team to get back onto that cycle. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you, Mayor Smoak.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilor Salt?
Yeah, thank you. I I want to re- repeat a lot of that Council Valentino just mentioned. I I do want to, I do want to thank administration. I as mentioned, they were putting it on both sides of the candle right there. There's a lot of stuff going on right now. And we do appreciate that the work has been put in. It wasn't easy. It was a bit of a balancing act. But, you know, at the end of the day, they managed to get the information that we needed to be able to make the decisions that we have made. So thank you to the administration for it. I am extremely happy that we are using, or we brought our public safety as the number one issue, in my opinion, right now. You know, it's been the biggest issue for years, even when I was on council the first time, it wasn't true. So this council is, I see some earmarking, it was planned. I do agree, we need to see how much it can leverage, but this council and this community has to have a good hard talk about safety. Not just, you know, what we see in the numbers, but the perception of safety because perception is nine tenths reality. And I can tell you right now that from what I hear from your average Thompson, I say do not feel safe in Thompson. And it's been, it's been slighted for a number of years now. So we, we, we need to stop it now. We need to draw a line in the sand and we need to start to work on it because that even more so than, you know, discussion on affordability, people want to feel safe in their community. And right now, it's not the same idle state. Many people do. The affordability, I I totally agree with what I just mentioned. Thompson, and I just had that discussion this morning. Thompson does provide things that other places do not provide. We do not do a good enough job, I think, of marketing those things. So we do need to go back to that and say, you know what, at the end of the day, people want to see value for what they're paying taxes. If you see that value, I think most people are willing to pay, you know, those increases, but they need to see what are they getting for their, for their taxes that they're paying. So I think we, we need to go back and and look at that. I I do recall there were some discussions over the years, presentations in which we compared ourselves to other use of dollars, not just with the mill rate, but also what we provide versus what I just don't provide. I think we need to bring that back. So I will be supporting this budget. I think it's a responsible one. I know having zero percent is 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 great to hear, but I I would not be a counselor where we are basically, you know, setting future councils for failure. I think what council been here with a two percent, which very much was in line with quota. I think that's a sparkful thing to do. It helps us as well for us to bring back up some of our reserves. We need that. So I think overall is a, is a good budget. Of course, it doesn't address everything that everyone wants. No budget will ever do that. It's always a give and take, but at the end of the day, I am proud of the work that was put in, as we said, especially by administration. And I, I encourage all of our, all of my councilors to support it as well.
Thank you. Anyone else comment? Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I must say, I pretty much agree with some of the comment that from my colleague about the time and effort to put in this budget. But I I must say that the last assessment branch presentation, I wasn't here, so I didn't realize the assessment revenue increased so much for C E O Thompson. What I had learned last night based on the financial plan presentation by the CFO. If I know what I know yesterday or day before about the, the revenue increased by reassessment, the property, I will have a totally different way of asking or or perhaps the, the way of budgeting. Yes, I must admit that two percent is, came from me that I see it needed for that budget to put in the public safety. But I didn't realize the, the, the assessment revenue, which is significant increase that we can generate almost close to a million dollars out of the reassessment. So if I knew that would be the, the case, I would suggest zero and use the nine hundred thousand dollars and put the two, two hundred thousand redirect to the, the reserve fund. So that way it's not going to be so much of impact to the taxpayer. So other than that, I think it's a good budget. I have to be agree. A lot of things that we all did, which is, I think, is a pretty good way of putting the money aside and then for the future, especially on the CFO that work, I was leading to get this budget down to the point that we can, we can move around money to, to still accomplish a lot of things. But unfortunately, because I look at the, the revenue that we can generate by the reassessment with on top two percent, that I I have a hard time to do that because I have a principle when it comes to money. Yes, I'm not disagree with all the, the comment that from my colleague. But with this budget with the two percent, I think after I learn from the what we can gather, I cannot support this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other comments? Councilor Valentino?
Did Councilor Oberdorff?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Just my final comments as, as the movers. I forgot to mention about all the equipment that we're buying because I think that it's great that we're funding out of the landfill reserve. And I think that the messaging or the communication to the public is the landfill reserve isn't a reserve that's built off of any taxes. A lot of that came from it being a profitable landfill, especially from kiosk. And it has built that reserve substantially. So when we spend money out of the reserve, we actually have to ensure that we're following through the, the province, how to spend out of there. So if it's equipment that can be used in the landfill, the landfill reserve is what funds it. So that's not coming out of tax dollars. So if we're buying equipment out of the landfill reserve, it's not money that can be used for anything else. So and I think it's great that as we started to replace equipment that's not coming from taxpayers' dollars, it's coming out of the landfill reserve. So I just wanted to make sure that we clarify that. And as the final, my final and closing marks, mayor, as, as as the movers, I think it's also important that the public understands that we did see all of these numbers before the presentation last night. So we were all well aware of, of dollar amounts and assessed income and and all of that. It was provided to council and reviewed with CFO. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Trump?
Uh, thank you, Madam. I, I look at the budget. The way we spend, I think some of the items, maybe, maybe we shouldn't spend that much. Maybe we should reconsider how we spend the money. Because that money spent, we can move forward and do something else, right? And our CFO has tried her very, very best to give us a very, very detail. And, and actually the budget is right on. But the problem is because of the assessment and also the two percent increase plus the assessment, some of the tax will be automatically increased that maybe from three hundred to a thousand dollars. So not everybody in this community are having a good resource of income. And some of the people are living on a limited budget or fixed income, especially retirement people. Right? So we have to look at a general population, how they can afford suddenly that increase of this tax, property tax. And especially this year, we will not getting the educational tax refund. We just get a small portion of the, the tax credit. That's all we have. So I do mean, I want to stand in the opposition all the time. I like to be on the good side. I, I think I cannot support this final budget. So that's my reason.
Thank you. Do you have any more for this factor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to CFO and all the administration for the work they did and all of our council for working together. I mean, it was tough, but I, I think the budget is, is good the way it sits and I'm okay with the two percent. So I will be supporting this budget as it's.
Anyone else? Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to make sure the public understand this revenue from the the garbage dump. When L G D running the garbage dump, we, we used to pay five dollars to get in. Ever since the city table room started charging twenty bucks, charging by axle, charging by tonnage. So that's why we get a lot of extra money from because of the, the skill of charging change. And I don't agree with paying that kind of money because my taxes already included a garbage fee. But sometimes people chose to bring and also the city limited the, the volume of the garbage that we can, we can throw in the garbage bin. So now we have extra garbage. We have to take it outside ourselves and get charged again at the dump. So that's why the money is getting so great from that perspective. So I, I mean, like, it's not just from one of the, the source there from a kiosk. It's from all of the taxpayers in Thompson or the contractor that demolished the, the building in Thompson, bringing out and not paying a tonnage instead of, it used to be the five dollars. Anyway, there, there is, I want to make sure that the public understand that changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I just want to thank everybody. CFO Lynn Taylor and all of her staff that work so hard. All of us had actually sat around tables and discussed this and, and the fact that we were able to come in with only the two percent increase and people have noticed what we're doing around town over the last few years. We have an airport that will be finished, which is not in our city proper, but it's economic development that will bring prosperity to the city and, and business to the city. We bought our aquatic sector that we're basically halfway through and not causing a big issues with the taxpayer. Artie Parker Collegiate, they put on a new bandroom. The bridge was completed, basically, out of some of the problems. Basically, the Boys and Girls Club is doing a huge renovation just in town. Other businesses that are starting to set up, the two new pieces of land we sold last night for businesses here. So Thompson is definitely on the upkeep and we have to keep it going that way. But we also have to look out to make sure that we're not, you know, losing sight of that we want the community to grow and that we want people to prosper. And let's face it, our tax base is basically, we don't have as many of the valid jobs as we had ten years ago. So we do have to make changes. And I think this council and even our last council has been very diligent in, you know, in working on the reserves and keeping the taxes to a minimum or near zero sometimes. And we were all in agreement on this two percent that will go to the public safety reserve. And I think our public even asked us last night, is that enough? So they're seeing it. And I'll just even go a little bit farther for a lot of the people that the taxes, the new ways that they're doing assessments. They've now got drones going into your yard. So some of it, your taxes may be up because you hadn't, you know, cleaned your deck before. You hadn't claimed a shed or that that's over, you know, ten by ten. So there's all numerous reasons that the tax went up. It's not all because of the city. So I just want to say that I'm very proud of, of all my team here and for the taxes that we come up with. And like we said, we worked hard to get a couple of the last couple of years cleaned up and carried on. And even Lynn today was showing me, last year at this time, we had over two sheets of tax sale people. We're down to a sheet for last this year. So again, it shows that we can't be doing everything wrong because our people are keeping up to date with their taxes much better. So I thank you to Lynn and her staff. After all the due diligence they do with the people that do need help and I'm looking forward to moving on. So with that being said, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Post? It is Carrie. So two point two is the third reading of the levy by law offered, twenty fifty dash twenty twenty five. And the third reading is always a recorded vote. Resolution two zero two five one one five moved by Deputy Mayor Fitzpatrick, second by Council MacIver. Be resolved that by law two zero five zero two zero two five be given third and final reading and that it do now pass. Administration, comments? Okay, Deputy Mayor? Councilors, any further comments? Seeing none and a recorded vote. All those in favor? Councilor MacIver, Councilor Oberdorff? Councilor MacIver, Councilor Oberdorfer, Mayor Smook, Deputy Mayor Fitzpatrick, Councilor Valentino and Councilor Saw opposed? Councilor Wong and Councilor Trump. Thank you. It just passed. Again, thank you, everybody, for all your input. Call for adjournment. Deputy Mayor Fitzpatrick, Councilor MacIver, all favor?